Good evening. Going at six thirty P M. I'm gonna call this meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order on Thursday, October second, two thousand twenty-five. Next on our agenda is the plaintiff's allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, the free republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, without end and justice for all.
Next on our agenda is the roll call. Our secretary is not here tonight, so I will call the roll. Uh, Mr. Gomikia.
Present.
Mr. DeCosta is president. Mr. Mazara.
Here.
Mr. Piper.
Here.
All right, we have four members present tonight. Next on the agenda is item number five, approval of the agenda. Are there any comments or motions?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
All right, motion by Mr. Piper, supported by Mr. Gomikia. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying nay. That motion passes. Next on the agenda is.
I think you, uh, I think you skipped over the.
Skipped over.
Oh.
Going back to number four. Uh, we will again call the roll. If you have a contract conflict of interest, please indicate by saying yes. If not, please say no. Uh, Mr. DeCosta is a no. Mr. Mazara?
No.
Mr. Piper?
No.
Mr. Gomikia?
No.
Okay, no conflicts tonight. Thank you for that correction. Uh, next is the approval of the previous meeting minutes. These are the minutes for July third, was it?
That's correct.
I think you're right.
Uh, I will entertain any comments or motions.
I'll make a motion to approve the previous meeting minutes.
Motion made. Any seconds?
I will support that.
All right, motion made by Mr. Mazara, seconded by Mr. Piper. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying nay.
I will abstain, Mr. Chair, because I was not there.
Okay, that motion passes. Uh, next on the agenda is old business. We have no old business tonight, so we will move on to new business. Item eight A is a sign exception request from section twenty dash fourteen, three B. It is a request for a thirty-two square foot sign when a sixteen square foot sign is allowed, located in the southwest corner of twenty-six mile and Romeo Plank. Yusuf El Sayed, the petitioner, at permanent parcel zero eight, zero six, two hundred, zero five, zero. Mr. Box, if you could take us through this one for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. Um, I don't know, are these mics on? They they sound very quiet this evening. I don't know if you can hear them back there. All right, as you mentioned, um, subject property is twenty-six mile, uh, in Romeo Plank. It's a sign exception. Uh, the applicant is requesting a sign exception to a wall sign over the maximum sixteen square feet allowed. The sign has already been installed. Section twenty dash thirteen of the sign and sign regulations ordinance provides the zoning board of appeals with the authority to grant an exception from the strict application of such regulations provided that such relief may be granted without substantially impairing the intent of said chapter. So looking at the existing conditions, um, this is a facility that just expanded to add some units, uh, for tenant spaces, one of which is Tim Horton's. Uh, as I mentioned, the the sign in question, uh, has already been installed, uh, after being having their permit denied by the building department in July. Uh, again, the applicant is proposing a wall sign that has two separate components on the side of the building, uh, that faces Romeo Plank. The total area of the wall sign is thirty-two point one three square feet. Um, the the leaf logo is twelve point two five square feet and the name is nineteen point eight eight square feet. So the zoning board of appeals shall have the authority to grant these exceptions. Um, but there are some criterias, and I'm gonna go through those. Uh, the application in consideration of the sign exception shall be in accordance with these, uh, exception standards. So the first one of those, uh, would be obstructions. And to reiterate, Z B A should consider these following standards, uh, when reviewing these for an exception, uh, and and they should be in your motion as well. And I know we've provided some sample motions for your motion templates. So the first one being obstructions, that construction of any conforming sign would obstruct the vision of motorists or otherwise endanger public health or safety. Um, construction of a conforming sign at this location would not obstruct the vision of motorists or otherwise endanger, uh, public health and safety. Um, and frankly, neither would a non-conforming sign, uh, just a sign in general at this location would not obstruct, um, the vision of motorists. Visibility, uh, a conforming sign would be blocked from sight, uh, of passing motors due to existing buildings, trees, or other obstructions. As you can see, a a conforming sign or non-conforming, as it's already installed, the non-conforming, uh, is not obstructed. It's, this picture is taken from across the street. So there were, there's no trees in the way, no buildings in the way. So a conforming sign, uh, would have the same as this non-conforming sign in that, uh, it it's viewable from the road. The subject parcel also has directional signage, a sign on the front of the building and a, uh, monument sign in the corner, a pylon sign. Site features, construction of a conforming sign would require removal or severe alteration to significant features on the site such as removal of tree alteration, uh, or tree alteration of the natural, uh, instruction of or alteration or demolition of significant historical features or site amenities. Again, it's already built. Nothing was removed. Um, it's not, um, nothing within the site had to be, uh, altered to put these signs up conforming or non-conforming. Scale, so a sign that exceeds the allowable height or area standards of this chapter would be more appropriate in scale because of the large size or frontage of the premise of the building. Uh, for that criteria, um, again, the proposed sign does exceed the square footage. Uh, the subject property has a sign along the front of the building that's already thirty point six four square feet and is compliant. Uh, the tenant space for Tim Horton's is twenty-five feet long. However, the total building front is a hundred and twenty feet long. The site, uh, side of the building wall sign is located, that is located on is fifty feet long in the area where the Tim Horton's is located is in addition to an existing, uh, convenience store for the mobile gas station. The location of the sign is appropriate, uh, due to the location of the existing windows and location of the drive-through window. However, due to the front wall signage for Tim Horton's being onsite, the cabinet sign within the existing pylon sign, uh, on the corner and the other directional signage, um, kinda negates the reasoning that the business is not visible. It it's already visible. Aesthetics, that the exception shall not adversely impact the character or appearance of the other buildings or lot in the neighborhood. Um, staff does not anticipate that, should this exception be granted, that it would adversely affect the character of the neighborhood. Uh, minimal, that the exception shall be the minimum necessary to allow reasonable use, visibility, or readability of the sign. Again, the applicant is permitted a secondary sign on the sidewall of the building, however, is only permitted to be a maximum of sixteen square feet. The applicant has a wall sign along the front, that that's thirty squared, over thirty square feet already. Um, the applicant is requesting an exception to permit a sidewall sign that's more than double the maximum allowable. The site has multiple entrances from twenty-six mile and Romeo Plank Road. The site also has access to the existing shopping center on the southern side of the property connecting through Jack's Car Wash. The sign that i- is requesting the exception has two components to the sign. First, the full Tim Horton's name, as I mentioned, uh, which was eight, uh, nineteen point eight eight square feet and the Tim's leaf logo, which is twelve point two five square feet. Uh, due to one of the two aspects, um, of the sign being compliant with the sign chapter, staff are of of the opinion that the criterion is not satisfied. And then the intent of the chapter. So the intent of the sign and regulation chapter is, is really that the the business can be viewable and visible to passing motorists. So the requested exceptions would improve visibility for the business due to the existing landscaping along Romeo Plank Road that buffers existing business. However, approving the sign exception may go beyond the intent of the chapter, uh, due to the existing front wall, pylon sign and directional signage that already exists. As you see in these pictures, there's signs for Tim Horton all over the place. Staff feels that it's, it is already pretty visible. Um, so other departments took a look at this request, assessing had no related objections, same as building. The fire department, uh, had no reject objections, no comments from Public Works, and engineering had no objections to the request as submitted. So my planning staff as well took a look at this, um, and recommend that any motion made by the Z B A include reference to any of the above standards to support the motion presented. As I said before, we gave you some motion samples and templates, um, but those need to be part of the record for a sign exception. Regarding visibility, a conforming sign would not be difficult to view from the passing traffic. Uh, and the subject site has other compliant signage, including a wall sign facing twenty-six mile, a pylon sign at the hard corner, and directional signage that give it ample visibility. Regarding site features, the sign was already installed and and conforming or not, no site features needed to be altered. Regarding scale, uh, the other compliant signage on the site negates the proper reasoning to permit a sidewall sign over the allowable maximum size. Regarding aesthetics, staff do not anticipate, um, the exception requested would adversely affect the character of the area. And then regarding minimal, the request does not appear to be the minimum necessary to effectively communicate the presence of the business. Um, the sign that they're requesting the exception for, as I mentioned before, has two pieces. Uh, if it were just the Tim's logo piece, they wouldn't need an exception, uh, but by putting two, uh, separate pieces together, they're over more than double, um, the allowable limit. And lastly, regarding intent, the intent of the sign and sign regulation ordinance is to allow visibility for the business or development, uh, while minimizing harmful harmful effects and protecting the public health, safety, and welfare. So approving the sign exception may go beyond the intent of this chapter, as I said, because of the existing compliant signage that it's very clearly visible, uh, but it does not pose any harmful effects.
Thank you. Are there any questions or concerns from Mr. Box from the board? All right, hearing none at this time, is the petitioner here with us tonight? I do not see anybody. How about, is there any members from the public that wish to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll take it, bring it back up to the board. Again, if there's any questions for Mr. Box or any discussion, if not, we're willing, I'm willing to entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Box, just to reiterate, because the leaf is under the sixteen square feet that they still have to work with essentially, they could keep the leaf and remove the other sign.
That's correct.
Could they, but they couldn't do the other way around, remove the leaf.
Correct, the the text that says Tim Horton's is over the limit.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else this time? All right, I will entertain a motion from anyone.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to deny the sign exception, uh, to allow a sign of thirty-two point one three square feet, when sixteen square feet is the maximum allowed based on the fact that a conforming sign would achieve the intent of the ordinance as it relates to the visibility and scale. And I believe the, uh, this exception would be granting, um, you know, way beyond the intent of our ordinance, uh, our ordinance, excuse me. And, uh, I I think would grant a, uh, it would be granting them something that other businesses are aren't entitled to, and and it'd be, uh, too large of an exception.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Piper. Is there a second?
Support.
Support by Mr. Gomikia. So we have a motion to deny the request for a thirty square, thirty-two square foot sign when a sixteen-foot square foot sign is allowed. I will take a roll call on this. Mr. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Gomikia?
Yes.
Mr. Mazara?
Yes.
Mr. DeCosta votes yes. That motion is denied. Next up is item eight B. This is a variance request from section ten dot zero seven, zero four, D one. This is to request a, request to install a pool thirteen point six feet away from a property line when twenty-five feet is required. There's also a variance request from section ten dot zero three, one, one, A three to request to install a pool thirteen feet away from a property lat line when twenty-five feet is required. This is located in Monarch Estates on the north side of twenty-two mile road east of Garfield. For Brazio.
Jacona.
Jacona is a petitioner. Thank you. Uh, this is a permanent parcel zero eight, two zero, three, five, one, zero, two, six. Mr. Box, if you could take us through this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. Uh, so as you mentioned, um, this is, uh, in the Monarch Estate subdivision north of twenty-two mile east of Garfield Road. They are requesting a variance to install a pool that is thirteen point six feet away from a property line when twenty-five feet would be required. Um, so the proposed conditions here, the applicant, as I said, is is seeking a variance for thirteen point five feet when twenty-five feet is required. You can see in yellow the area that would be part of the pool that's in violation. So with reference to the actual standards, the front and side street, this, uh, as you see in the bottom language there, this, because it's fronts on a street, even though practically it's the side of the house, it it's treated as a front yard per our ordinance. Uh, and so with a local road, it would require, um, sixty, uh, fifty-five feet off the center line of the road, which equates to the twenty-five-foot setback that I already mentioned. So for the variance review procedures, um, the board shall not approve an application for variance unless it establishes definitively that, um, compliance with the strict letter of the restrictions governing the area setback, frontage height, uh, would unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property. Uh, a grant of the variance applied would do substantial justice to the applicant as well as to other property owners in the district. Uh, and then relief can be granted in such a fashion that the spirit of the ordinance will be observed, uh, and public safety and welfare secured. So I'll go through those criteria for you. So again, compliance with the strict letter, uh, governing the area with regards to setbacks, front edge height. So this property is irregular shaped, as you saw on the aerial. Uh, it's very much more narrow in the rear of the lot than it is in the front. Um, typically, our lots are seventy by one twenty. When you get to the rear of that lot, I believe it was around fifty-seven feet in width, so it's significantly more narrow than most. Um, the applicant is proposing the pool area thirteen point five feet into the required twenty-five-foot setback. If the lot were a typical rectangular shape, um, the requested variance may not have been needed. However, due to the curve of split rock road from Bingham Lane, the property decreases in width, as I mentioned, uh, and it it does decrease the buildable area of the property. So a grant of the variance applied for would do substantial justice to the applicant as well as to other property owners in the district or a lesser relaxation that may be applied would give substantial relief to the owner of the property involved. So again, looking at that criteria, a grant of this variance would allow the property owner additional use of the subject property to construct the pool uh, within the required front yard setback due to the irregular shape of. uh, within the required front yard setback, due to the irregular shape of, of the subject property uh, in the existing storm sewer and surface drainage easement. Uh, the rear yard has decreased buildable area, and again, due to the curve of split rock road in, in Bingham Lane, reducing the widths. Uh, the property owner is abiding by all other required setbacks and not proposing the construction of the pool in any easement. With regard to relief being granted in such a fashion that the spirit of the ordinance is met, we would defer to the applicant if they have any additional information. Uh, but it does appear largely that it does meet the intent, um, or the spirit of the ordinance that there, uh, would this be a standard rectangular-shaped lot, it would be in their rear yard. So again, findings of fact, due to the irregular shape of the corner lot, which reduces the width of the lot in the rear yard, conformance with the ordinance would seem to be unnecessarily burdensome, uh, but again, the applicant may provide additional information.
All right, thank you, Mr. Box. Is there any questions or concerns for Mr. Box?
I do.
All right, Mr. Kamikia?
I'm, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I'm a little confused, Josh, on the blueprint. So the highlighted portion, is that even in the pool?
It's, it's part of the pool deck, so it's treated as part of the pool.
That's deck. Got it. Okay. I saw deck below when I was confused. Thank you.
I had the same concerns, and, and I don't know if Mr. Box is it, if, and I can bring this up later on, too, if we were to grant a variance, and something we'd want to put a condition that the pool itself needs to be out of the twenty-five foot, but the pool deck can be within the, within the setback?
It's within your purview to add conditions to, to a variance. I believe, based on what I'm seeing here, what they're proposing, the pool itself, the actual surface water, you know, of the pool would be outside of the setback requirement.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from Mr. Box at this time?
Let me get a clarification on that. So if we're granting this variance, though, and they change their plans, if we don't put that exception, could they then put the pool in that area where right now it's showing the deck?
Potentially, yes.
Okay.
Okay, hearing nothing at this time, is the petitioner in the audience? If you can step up to the, to the middle here, give your name and address for the record, and we'd be happy to hear your, your story and your petition for a variance.
You can have a seat.
Yeah, just have a seat.
Pull the microphone towards you, so, sorry, it's angled down. Thank you.
Yeah. Fabrizio Giaccona. I moved in there about a year and a half ago. I do have two, two boys, ages ten and twelve. Um, so that's the purpose for the pool. Um, also have, you know, three nephews who, who lost their dad recently, so obviously it's a, it's space for us to potentially entertain the family. Um, we are putting it, you know, as far kind of to the right of the backyard as we can, so we're, it's really just due to the irregular shape. I mean, it's a, it's a fifteen by thirty standard pool, so we're not really, I wasn't looking for anything out of the ordinary. Um, it's a pretty, pretty large lot, so I was actually a little bit shocked to know that it wouldn't potentially be able to put it in there, but, uh, yeah, just looking to, you know, make some memories with the family and just, just a standard fifteen by thirty pool, so.
And can you give your address for the record as well?
Yeah, four nine four six nine Bingham Lane.
Okay.
In Monarch Estates.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner at this time? I think the only thing I had, we mentioned it real quick, about the pool itself being outside the twenty-five-foot setback. Uh, this, if this board was able to make that condition, are you okay with that?
Yeah. Just kind of as the plans are.
Yeah, it's per the plan that you submit.
Yep, that's the plan, just to keep it like that.
All right, at this time, seeing no other questions, is there anybody from the audience who would like to come up and speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for any final questions, concerns, or motions. And I guess, Mr. Box, is there two variances on this one?
There essentially, yes, there, there should be two motions. They're essentially requet, requiring the same twenty-five-foot setback, but yes, there should be two motions.
Okay, let's take these individually, and please read off which motion you're making a, uh, which, which item you're making a motion for, for the, uh, motion person.
So I'll make a motion to approve, um, the variance request, ten point zero seven zero four D one, for permanent parcel zero eight twenty-three fifty-one zero twenty-six, with the condition that it falls in the envelope of the, of the plan currently, and that the pool can encroach on that twenty-five feet.
Is there a second on that motion?
I will second that motion.
Okay, Mr. Piper, seconds. I do have one question, I guess, one more question from Mr. Box. You had mentioned in the um, packet, as well as the plan, talks about the building sump. Is that something we need to put a condition on, or is that just going to be part of the building?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Isn't there a building sump within the footprint of this pool?
I, I think the building department made a note that the pool could not be built up, on top of the sump.
We don't need a condition for that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, concerns, before we go to a vote? All right, Mr. Mazara?
Yes.
Mr. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. DeCosta votes yes. Mr. Kamikia?
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously. If we can have a motion for the second variance.
So I'll make that motion as well, um, section ten point zero three one one A three for permanent parcel zero eight twenty-three fifty-one zero twenty-six to approve the variance request, um, with the same condition, that the pool won't encroach on the twenty-five feet, and it follows the plans that were given to us.
Motion is made. Is there a second?
I will second that as well.
All right, motion made by Mr. Mazara, second by Mr. Piper. We will take a roll call vote. Mr. Mazara?
Yes.
Mr. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Kamikia?
Yes.
Mr. DeCosta votes yes. That motion also passes. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to eight C. This is a variance to section ten dot zero three one one EF three. This is a request for a variance to allow an in-ground pool five feet away from a structure when ten feet is required. This is located in Fieldstone Estates, north of Twenty-Two Mile, east of Romeo Plank, section twenty-one. Frank and Melissa Kiyevsky are the petitioners. This is on permanent parcel zero eight two one three seven seven zero two three. Mr. Box, if you could take us through this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. Uh, again, this is a, a request for variance dealing with a pool. Uh, this is not a setback from the property boundary, but rather a setback from the house itself. So the ordinance requires, uh, that the pool be ten feet from the primary structure, and they are seeking a variance to have it be within five feet of the primary structure. Um, so as I mentioned, they're, they're seeking five feet from the primary structure rather than the ten feet required. As you see, the, there is a projection, if you can see my cursor here, there is a projection on the house that sticks out, so the five feet is here, uh, and, and I will point out that, uh, you know, we've talked about this a number of times, uh, the setback from the principal structure, uh, and one of the, the primary reasons for that uh, requirement in the ordinance is, um, the, the ratio for the ladders for the fire department need to be at certain angles and to, to reach second-story windows. Um, they would need, uh, approximately ten feet. And I will say that obviously this five feet here is on the corner, so no one's going to put a ladder on the corner, they're going to put a ladder here or here, which would not, uh, you know, the pool would not be in the way for those. That being said, um, so again, the, the ordinance under question is ten point zero three one one EF three, ten feet from other buildings not associated with the pool. In this case, that would be the principal structure. Uh, and it's the same procedures as the ones that just went through, so I'm going to walk through those again. So compliance with the strict letter of the, of the restrictions governing the area would be unreason, would unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for, for a permitted purpose, or would render conformity with such restrictions unnecessarily burdensome. So the, the pool is proposed at thirty-two feet by fifteen feet, uh, with a, a brick paver pool deck surrounding the entire pool. Uh, the home is lot fifty-three, then Fieldstone Estates. Lot is a hundred and twenty feet by seventy-five feet. It's very, very much uh, a rectangular lot. It's not an irregular-shaped lot. Uh, the home, uh, is not rectangular in shape, but does have the, the extension of eleven feet sticking off the rear, as I pointed out earlier. Due to the decreased, uh, buildable area, excuse me, due to the decreased buildable area, due to the existing easement and the shape of the house, um, the strict compliance with this, the regulations governing the property could potentially prevent the owner from using the property for the proposed purpose. Again, it, that would, I would defer to the ZBA to determine, um, you know, if, if that's truly a, a difficulty, as we say, uh, because easements do exist on almost every lot within the township, uh, and, and it could be argued that the shape of the house, um, is self-created, whether these are the original homeowners who built it or not, they, you know, that, that was that shape when they purchased the home. Um, so I'll defer to the ZBA to determine if that's unnecessarily preventing them from using the property. Uh, so a grant of the variance applied for would do substantial justice to the applicant as well as to the property owners in the district. Um, so it, within, with looking at that, a grant of this variance would give them substantial relief uh, and allow them to build the pool in their rear yard. The applicant is proposing to comply with all other setbacks and regulations. Uh, however, due to the existing twelve-foot easement in the rear of the property, the applicant may be considered subject to stricter rear yard setbacks than other R one zone properties that do not have a twelve-foot easement in their rear yard. If that easement didn't exist, the property owner would have an additional six feet of buildable area, uh, and, and the pool would be moved, could be moved, and, and they would not need this variance. Again, easements exist on almost every lot in the township, so I would defer to you guys to determine whether or not granting a variance would provide them greater justice than other property owners. Uh, and much like the last one, with regards to, um, the spirit of the ordinance, I'll defer to the applicant if they want to provide additional information. So for findings of fact, again, um, compliance with the strict letter of the regulations could be deemed unnecessarily burdensome. But again, it, that would relate to the easements that exist, and those do exist all over the township. Uh, it appears that a grant of variance requested could provide the applicant with greater relief than other property owners in the same district. As I said, I'll defer to the ZBA whether you feel that that would, would justify a, a practical difficulty.
Okay, thank you. Is there any comments or questions this time from Mr. Box from the board? All right, hearing none, we'll invite the petitioner or petitioners to come up to the front table. Please state your names and address for the record.
Hello, I'm Donnie Grace. I'm representing Melissa, um, and Frank over at five nine four five three Y L Drive. What?
Four nine, four nine five four three Y L Drive.
Okay, if you can give us.
I'm Melissa Kiyevsky.
Okay, thank you. And then if you want to give us a kind of a rundown of your request here?
Um, so with the way that that yard is and that bump out, I literally try to keep everything right off to the side so that the pool itself does not extend past that corner. Um, unfortunately, um, the way that that lot is set and that bump out is sticking out. I am, um, asking for that five foot. I did hear the mention of the second-story issue um, that, um, in this case is not a second story, that's all great, so we wouldn't, that, you know, if that was ever an issue. Another thing is too, um, within that five feet, um, we're doing a gunite, so we don't have to overdig but one foot, so we won't have to worry about undermining any of the footing of the house or anything structurally. Um, that would actually be a concern of putting the pool too close to the, the residence. And in this particular case, we're sitting, like I said, the corner of the pool from the corner of the house um, to be used to utilize the backyard as desired with that big easement.
Any other comments from Melissa?
I think Donnie covered most of it. That twelve-foot easement, we were not aware of. We did not build the house, we purchased it, um, back in two thousand and eight. We, the street behind us is on a dirt road. They're on a septic and well system, so the twelve feet is all on our property, which we weren't aware of. So in order to basically create a pool that would fit within the confines, it's, without getting this variance, it would be very, very narrow and essentially, we would not be able to put in a pool.
Yeah, that was going to be my next question. Have you explored other shapes or pool sizes in order to achieve the, the?
We have, and we went to other companies, um, and pursued fiberglass as another option, but those are standard pool shapes that you have to basically meet those specifications. Donnie is able to do custom for us, so he was able to maximize the space that we do have. Um, but again, that's dependent on getting this variance.
Okay. Any other questions from the board for the petitioner? Okay, hearing none right now. Any comments from the public? No one here. Uh, so I guess at this point, we'll bring it back up to the board. Again, any other comments, concerns for the petitioner or Mr. Box, um, willing to entertain. I will say, on this one, it's, it's a little tougher for me on this one. I don't see a practical difficulty on this one. I don't see any features of the lot that would allow us to allow that large of a pool within five feet of the property. Or five, five feet from the building line. That's my take on it. Um, but again, we want to hear any comments, concerns, or motions from the board on this.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
I mean, this is a very large capital expenditure for us to be making. If we don't receive the variance, the width of the pool, our neighbor has a pool, and she put hers in before a lot of these codes were in effect. But we've been in that pool, and it's very narrow, and it's very hard to entertain, it's very hard to basically, it doesn't fit anybody besides a family. Um, not that we're looking to host large parties or anything, but the size of the pool would be significantly reduced if we weren't able to come within the five-foot variance from that. And like we said, that's not a two-story section of our house, it's a single story. There's no issues with getting ladders in there.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? Motions? I can make one if no one wants to, but I don't know if the, the chair should make a motion, does it matter?
There's nothing preventing you from making a motion.
Okay, then hearing none, I will make a motion then to deny the request for the variance to allow an indoor pool five feet from the structure when ten feet is required. Is there a second to that motion?
I will second that motion.
And Mr. Piper, seconds. Is there any other comments or concerns before we take that roll call vote? Okay, uh, Mr. DeCosta votes yes. Mr. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Mazara?
No.
And Mr. Kamikia?
No.
No, so that motion fails, uh, two to two. So we can entertain, and Mr. Box, can we enter, we, I'm assuming we can entertain another motion here?
Yes.
Okay. I don't, being we're even this evening, um, we maybe go through this exercise a couple of times, is?
So.
We played our case more.
So, so you have, you have voted, okay, and the motion failed. At this point, I think you do have to advise, remind the petitioner that we are short people today. And so conceivably, if you were to vote again today and no one changed their mind, it would be, you know, to, if you, if you moved to approve it and no one changed their mind, it would be a tie. So at this point, um, maybe the petitioner wants to consider tabling this to when we have a full, uh, ZBA where the odds will be that it will be granted or denied with the full complement of the ZBA there, so that's something to consider.
So if you didn't understand, what the attorney is saying is we are short this evening. We only have four members. We're even, we've voted two to two. I'm assuming if somebody makes a motion to approve, it's going to end up failing for lack of, um, votes. So if the motion by the petitioner would be to table it to the next, uh, scheduled, well.
They could request to, to table it to the next meeting.
We will have presumably five, which is an odd number, which doesn't mean you're going to, it's going to pass or fail, but we'll get out of this perceived gridlock that we're in.
Now, can I ask a question, though?
Sure.
Um, so I mean, are we talking like, if I can gain a foot or two, that would be the difference, or is it anything under that ten foot?
Well, right now, we're considering a motion for five foot.
So if I, so if we ask for six, does that change our, our board, or is that something that you guys can counter us on and say, well, okay, we don't like five, but we like six?
Well, I'll, I guess for Josh, we're tabling an item with five foot.
What was requested was, was five feet. I, I, and Mr. Lake can correct me if I'm wrong, to, to change it to six feet or seven feet, it may need to be re-advertised that way.
Yeah, that's not before the board today.
Right.
But I think we have to maybe tech, take a step back, and that's not really for this panel to decide now, but the, the, I don't know if you understand, so typically, we have five people here. Okay, so you're going to get three vo, it, it's not going to be a tie, but we're short today because we had some people who were out. So you have four people, you have a tie. And if they were to vote, someone's to file a motion to approve, and no one changed their vote, you're going to get a tie again. So I'm not going to tell you what to do, but chances are, if you requested to table this to the next meeting, you're going to get five people, you're going to get a decision either way. In the interim, you can have that discussion with Mr. Box about whether or not you change. In the interim, you can have that discussion with Mr. Box about whether or not you change your application, or you amend your, 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 your motion and figure out what you wanna do. But again, I can't advise you, but I'm just making you aware of the facts.
Um, we can't unadertize, so it's gonna be.
Yeah.
Unless someone was to change their mind up here, which.
I will say that I've been trying to look for a condition to put on it so that it could be approved. Um, I, I'm really torn on this one. I, I'll be very honest. It's, it's a tough one, because there really isn't a practical difficulty.
Well, I would say that a scanner pool, let's say, is fifteen by thirty. We would be looking at, what, a ten by thirty? Ten feet wide is essentially not much longer than my wing span. I don't think that that's appropriate to have the investment in a pool. So I don't, I do think that it creates the hardship where.
And Mr. Box, this is pool, not pool deck, correct?
Pool. Water's digest.
So I guess, I, back to the question at hand, if you'd like to request a tabling, this board can take that into consideration, and we can table. Josh, do you know if we have a November meeting?
We do.
Okay, so we would table this until November?
Sixth.
Sixth? I know it's probably not the, the answer you want tonight, but we're gonna, we may, we may be going back and forth with motions and never see any progress, and you're not gonna get the, an answer tonight anyway.
Okay. All right. So I guess then we request to table the, uh, the issue?
Okay. The petitioner has requested to table the motion until the November sixth meeting. Josh, do we need a motion, a second?
Somebody should motion to table.
Can we get a motion from the board for that?
I'll make that motion to the table.
I'll second it.
All right, motion made by Mr. Piper, seconded by Mr. Mazara. All those in favor of motion this item until November sixth, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by saying nay. That motion passes. Sorry for the inconvenience, but we will have you back on November sixth.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that carries us through new business. Uh, we are now at item number nine, which is public comment. Anybody left from the audience that would like to speak tonight? You have four minutes. Seeing none, ZBA member comments? Anybody from the board that would like to address tonight?
Uh, I'll make a quick comment. I, I can't make the Wednesday meetings for the Board of Trustees, where I, I would've made this comment, but I'd like to congratulate ninety-seven-year-old, uh, resident Milton Miller on successfully hunting a bear, uh, recently. Uh, I think that's amazing, and he was all alone when he did it as well.
That's what I want to do when I grow up.
It was in the news recently, and, uh, he actually, he's part of our, uh, historical commission, and we had our meeting, uh, Tuesday, and he actually gave each of us a, a pound of frozen bear meat.
Nice. Uh, the only comment I have, we mentioned we have a November meeting, um, I don't remember the bylaws specifically, but with having a alternate member tonight, can Mr. Kamikia participate, should he be here at the next meeting to hear the second half of this petition? Or is, can we introduce new people?
Uh, there's, there's nothing that says we can't introduce new people. Um, I can talk offline with Mr. Loya if he thinks we should bring Mr. Kamikia back specifically for that item. Um, but I, I'm gonna make the same presentation, so if, whether it's him or not, whoever's here next time is gonna hear.
Yeah, I just didn't know, being that it was a stalemate, I don't know if you had an opinion on that. You can.
Yeah, let me think about that. I, I don't think it's necessary off the top of my head, but.
And we may have, who knows, we may have someone not be able to show up, and I would say Mr. Kamikia should probably be asked first, since he's been here, so. Um, planning director comments?